Before we get started, I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday and Merry Christmas and a bright new year. It's right around the corner and so I'd like to call this meeting of December 23rd to order and for the record is 1:13. If you'll call roll please.
Mayor Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Cantu.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Pedalta.
Here.
Councilmember Han.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. Please, Councilor Peralta.
I'm moved to adjourn.
Because of the holiday season.
Nice for lack of a second.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second.
John, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will remain standing or just to offer a brief moment of silence, I know Mr. Luis Baker worked for the Town of Taos at some point and Mr. Ted Martinez that has both recently passed, just have a brief moment of silence and also for all those families in our community that are a little less fortunate during this Christmas season, that their holiday will be blessed. Council have approval of the agenda. I know that it wasn't listed, but I just want to, under matters from staff, A, B, C, E, and F will be on the, will be as a consent agenda. D and G will be, have some discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add two additional items under presentations regarding staff.
Okay, that, D, I mean, C and D?
Yes, please.
Okay. Council, what is the wishes?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
As amended?
As amended. Second.
And a second, any further discussion, any further additions or deletions? Seeing none, hearing none, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, we have approval of the minutes of November 25th, 2014, regular minutes, council?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion, not call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Thank you. So go on to presentations, under A, letter A, we have Girl Scout Troop 321, and they will like to present to the mayor and council ideas to adopt a street in the Town of Taos. And thank you, young ladies and leaders, for being here, what a great opportunity to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor Barone.
And if you give each one of these young ladies and yourselves the opportunity to introduce themselves with their names also, if you would.
I'm Kay Ann Tycey, and I'm one of the troop leaders. And Sue Martin Trujillo is our Bronze Award advisor, and what we're here about is a Bronze Award project. And then the girls introduce themselves.
I'm Nick Tycey.
Glad to meet you.
Isabelle Ramari.
Anna Kayla Trujillo.
Glad to meet you and thank you for being here. And you might have to pull the microphones a little closer to you so that they can pick your, and if you'd like to sit down, you can pull the chair.
They want to, but they want to squish together. Can you guys sit down there, together? Okay.
We're friendly.
Yeah, they promise.
Except for the guy in blue. Be careful with him.
He's not, but I know. I know where to find him. He's in my district.
He's been wanting to steal Christmas all day.
Oh, shoot. There are three members of the team that aren't here because of the holiday break, Michelle Valerio, Hannah O'Brien, and Lucinda Nichols, so.
We are members of Troop 321. I don't know that word.
We already introduced ourselves, so.
We are...
What are, what are we? What kind of Girl Scouts?
Juniors in the Girl Scouts of America. The Bronze Award is the highest award a junior Girl Scout can earn.
In order to earn a Bronze Award, we have to complete a journey form. A team explore a community, choose a project, make a plan, put our plan in motion, and spread the word. Our team noticed that many areas of our town could be improved by picking up trash. This would help the environment and make it more enjoyable for those who live here or visit.
We decided to try to adopt a street in Taos and keep it trash-free. Our first step is to ask you, the Town Council, for permission to adopt a street. We are hoping to adopt Albright Street because many local people and visitors use it, but has, but has sidewalks and not a lot of traffic.
We will need to seek donations and/or raise money to purchase gloves, bags, vests, and figure out a plan to deposit the trash. We plan to finish the entinal cleanup by the end of April, but plan to continue to maintain it in the future. To get others involved, we plan to contact other groups and challenge them to try to adopt a street. We hope this will help our fellow Taosennios to be proud to live in such a beautiful place and not litter in our town.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, I think under, previously under our New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant, we had trash bags, gloves, and vests that we could probably donate to you, especially for this cause. So, Mr. Mayor, if we could direct staff to look into at least covering that portion of it for them?
We'll look into it, Councilor.
You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like to suggest that we create some signs for the Girl Scouts to put on Albright, showing that they have adopted that street and for the town and so that they get the recognition that they deserve for what they're doing for our community. Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. French in the audience?
Yes.
French, if you could see we can get some signs put together with their troop number and adopted by, if we could get that done. Thank you. Anything else, counselor?
Yeah. I think for both of us, thank you so much, girls. I know it takes a lot of guts to come over here and voice your opinion, and I'm really, really proud of you for doing that, and I think you're an inspiration for everybody in the community and anybody who's watching at home on television, hear what these girls said, you know, it takes the whole community to keep Taos clean and beautiful, so thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you.
Han?
And, young ladies, I'm very proud of you and I'm very grateful to you, you're the very first, so I compliment you on your thought, your reflection, your plan of action. You're going to meet some very important people in our community, like Miranda and French, who will be making the signs and getting gloves. I also want you to know that aside from being the first, you had mentioned you wanted to challenge other groups, so I'm going to ask your troop leader to maybe give me a call because there are other citizens who also would like to start adopting streets as you have started. So perhaps Ms. Tycey can call me and I can give you, give her those contacts so that we can challenge and then maybe revisit this, Mr. Mayor and council, to get a status report on how you're doing in your pursuit of the Bronze Award. Thank you.
So thank you, thank you, ladies, for being here, thank you for stepping up to the plate and taking on this challenge, and we commend you for it. So if you guys need anything, any further assistance, please come and talk to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those girls have a lot of merit badges.
So we'll go on to a presentation to Kit Carson Electric, Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. People may or may not know that beyond what Kit Carson does as an electric provider, propane provider, and now our fiber optic provider for the community, that in addition, they're very involved in community events, everything from providing the equipment and special connections for Solar Fest so that that can happen in Kit Carson Park, and we've benefited from those improvements as a town, as well as the other groups that use them. Our holiday decorations that go up along the main, along Paseo, and this year, we really extended a hand and asked for help to decorate the plaza, and I know a lot of people have commented on how nice that was, that would not have been possible had it not been for hours and hours of crews who really got into the spirit, as well as the equipment, to be able to reach those trees, and advising us so that we didn't blow up the entire downtown when we plugged it all in, like a bad movie. And those are just some of the things that Kit Carson does, and they're constantly, they're for us whenever we at the town and then for the mayor and I when we were at the county, when it involved helping out at baseball fields, whatever was needed, and we just thought that a public statement of that recognition really needed to be made, so it's my understanding. Mr. Luis Reyes is here.
We'd like to present this certificate of appreciation to Kit Carson Electric Cooperative on behalf of the Town of Taos, the mayor and council. I'd like to recognize you for your continuing support of all Town of Taos annual events and for making this a better community and everything possible. Thank you very much.
Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Bellis, mayor, council. Really want to thank the employees of Kit Carson, because, you know, I'm just, I have the opportunity to manage it, but it's the employees who make it work. Also want to thank the employees of the Town of Taos, work well with French and with all the employees, so I think, I think this is something that we all should be doing. One challenge though for the, for the mayor at the, as we're talking about challenges, I think one of the most successful programs we have in Taos is Taos Feeds Taos, and the co-op has participated for a long time with our employees, but to be honest, I don't see a lot of town or county employees helping out, except for the mayor and, but I do think that we need to, as, as we talk about collaboration, we talk about unity within the community, we talk about working together to solve the issues that we have, that I think the private and public sector have to do more in giving of our time and ourselves, and so my challenge to, to the mayor and to the commission, if they're watching, is to join us on, with employees at Taos Feeds Taos, at other events, because I think we owe it to our constituents, we owe it to our, our members, to support those who are less fortunate, and really make this a community that we can all be proud of. And so I want to put it on TV so next year I can come back and see who had the most employees at the, at these functions, but again, it is an honor, I do want to thank the mayor and the council for working with Kit Carson. I think it's a two-way street, it's just not us supporting them, but the mayor and the council have supported the co-op in its ventures, and so I truly think it's a strong relationship we have forged, and we hope to continue that. So with that, Mr. Mayor and council, members of the community, Merry Christmas, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, happy birthday, whatever you celebrate, there's time, and like I said, Taos Feeds Taos, this is really time for family. Don't forget that and spend as much time with your family, because if it isn't for them, we probably wouldn't be here. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Luis. And we will answer your challenge. So we go to, Mr. Bellis, we have C and D?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I'm sure everybody knows, one of the big projects that the town and the county came together on, along with our other municipal partners, was the relocation of the 911 Command Center, but also the county putting over one and a half million dollars in new equipment into that facility. And every time you make a move of that magnitude, particularly to new technology, a lot of things can go wrong, and the town has been through that experience twice now, and I think it's been a fairly seamless operation. The headlines when things go wrong always seem to take precedence over everything else, and although we'll see when the paper comes out tomorrow if that's true again, but this transition went extremely well considering that some of the key personnel were swapping between the town and the county, and there's two people that have been involved for a very, very long time, from back again when the mayor and I were at the county in conceiving that project, improving things over here, and I don't know that 911 has ever run as smoothly as since Amity Bishop came on as director of the program, and everything from personnel to the switching relays, to the recording, to the getting the reports out, to people feeling like there was no bickering on the radios, you name it, she addressed it all in a very short period of time, and she is not, unfortunately, any longer one of our employees as of the 20th, along with our other dispatchers, but I thought it would not look well upon us if we didn't recognize the accomplishments that she's put together over the past year, both in managing the 911 and overseeing as the project manager for that transition to make sure that nothing dropped. We had a few phones on the fire department we had to catch up on, but we got that taken care of. And Amity, could you come up here? It says, "Certificate of appreciation, Amity Bishop, in grateful appreciation for your outstanding service in improving the public safety of our community."
Obviously, joint effort couldn't have been done without the employees that have worked their heart and soul to answer every phone call, make sure every problem has been addressed. It was a relatively smooth, seamless transition, worked really hard to make that happen for everyone, pleased, pleased, so pleased that you've noticed and that you cared, so thank you so much to everyone. Have a wonderful holiday.
And though we're losing a great employee, one of the employees of the county came over to our side, and that was Conrad Cordova as our IT director, and gave, continued to give tirelessly of himself, as, as did Nikki, as did the whole IT department to support the county. They were in a bit of a situation since the man with the plan came over here, and I can tell you from both at the county and over here, Conrad continues to make both of those entities shine, to look professional, to look competent, to find ways to save us money, to find ways that we can cooperate with each other, and there are very few people, maybe other than Amity, Richard Sanchez, myself, that know how much time, how much technical design Conrad had to do to plug in getting vendors that hadn't worked together to work together, equipment that was never designed to work together, and systems that were never designed to work together to all function smoothly. And Chief, the tone problem was not Conrad's fault, that was advanced communications. But Conrad, could you come up to here? And again, this is in grateful appreciation for your outstanding professional services and guidance in improving the public safety of our community.
Wow, I found this appreciation to be, I'm very grateful for this, but you know, as Amity indicated, there was a lot of work, and I am not alone in this, and I appreciate everything. One thing I really want to emphasize that this is probably the single most important thing that we can do as a community, as public officials, and what it does and how it affects people out there, and is, you know, we did get this right, and as Amity said, I'd like to reiterate that, but you know, it was really great that we got this up and running, and I'm really grateful for this. Thank you all.
And I guess, as maybe the last thing I'll ever say that's preceded by the word "county," I would like to thank the members of the former, the former mayor and council, as well as the current council, for when I was over at the county, and that you were willing to reach a hand across the aisle at a time that was tough politically and to put the interests of the public and the first responders ahead of, ahead of politics, and I think the whole community has benefited from that, and I thank all of you. I have one more short presentation here to do, if you'll give me one second. My mother used to tell me when you're walking with the cake, you always keep the cover on so you don't fall face-first into it. But we had a fun thing that we used to do as, as employees, managers, elected officials, and that was whenever there was a birthday, we celebrated it together, we noted it because we're family, and we're not just people that work together, but we all work together for the community, and we thought this, given the festivities, a holiday, was a good time to start that tradition again, and it is, on Saturday, was the birthday of Councilman Gonzalez, and we thought that all of us should sing "Happy Birthday" to him, if that's okay. Ready? Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Andrew, happy birthday to you. We don't have candles because Mr. Reyes told us as part of his public safety program it would constitute a fire hazard, so we did have the chief here, but this cake will be in the back, and if anybody would like a piece, please help yourselves.
I just want to say thank you, I'm honored, and that's a complete shock, Rick. Did not expect it, so thank you guys so much, and please enjoy the cake. It turned 35 on, on Saturday, and for me, it just feels so blessed by this community to be able to enjoy so many accomplishments within this community, but not only that, but to be part of a very dynamic council, a very dynamic group of leaders within this community, and just very, very fortunate for my family, my kids, everything that I've been blessed with in this life, so thank you, so please enjoy some cake.
Thank you. So we'll go on to citizens forums, citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so, and for five minutes, no action will be taken. Council, under this item, before we turn to any of those, I'd just like to report that there has been a permit for the construction of the airport issued, and I, and there, so it is posted out there, it's kind of exciting. John French, thank you guys, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Bellis, thank you for continuing to move this forward, and there is, I believe, some conditions on that, on that permit, but I believe those are conditions that can be easily moved through so that we can get that construction started ASAP. So again, congratulations to all. French, John French, is there anything that needs to be said on that? Mr. Lopez? Thank you. I know I saw our contractor here a few minutes ago, he walked in and then walked back out. I was just going to ask him if he had his machinery ready to start out there, so. So thank you. So anybody else from the, under the citizens forum that was wishing to speak? Stephen?
Ben Stias, Stevens Hall. At the previous council meeting, I believe that at least one or two buildings were transferred to U and M for a dollar, I believe that was the price. I wonder if that included the land? Even if it didn't include the land, it's, it's a sad commentary that the buildings are in such a state of repair, or disrepair, maybe that's the case, that they would be transferred to somebody for one dollar. I'm all for education, I'm all for assisting educational purposes, but the fact that the buildings, as has been discussed over many months now, the buildings that the town owns, seem to be in such a state of disrepair, represents, as far as I'm concerned, many years of abuse or disabuse, lack of maintenance, lack of thought, I don't think that's excusable. Now, the sins of the fathers are being visited upon you, the sons. It's not your fault, but at the same time, it doesn't seem like the town should be transferring properties for a dollar. I don't know what those building, or that building or those buildings are worth, but let's just say half a million dollars. Even at half price, if it's appraised, and that's another question, is it, I believe that there was a discussion during one council meeting to have all the buildings appraised, that there's no current appraisal on all the buildings, so before that building was transferred, was an appraisal done. I don't know if anybody can answer that question at this point in time, but it would be nice to know. But let's just say for the sake of argument that it's worth half a million dollars. Even at half price, $250,000, it's a bargain, that's a deal, it's one that I'm sure that U and M would have jumped at. I think that given this community, the business cohort of this community are always talking about how we need to search for the bottom line, we need to, you know, act like business people, it doesn't seem to me very business-like to make that transfer. I for one, it concerns me. I don't know if anybody else is concerned or not, but it does concern me, and I, I'll ask Rick, I guess later on, if they, if the building was appraised and what the appraisal was set at, but I hope it doesn't, I hope situations like this don't continue into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else like to address council? Okay. If not, we'll go on to a public hearing, and we'll open this public hearing, and the first item that we'll hear is ordinance 1411, penalty assessment, and Mr. Lopez, you're around here somewhere. Discussion and consideration and possible approval of ordinance 1411, an ordinance relating to the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Ordinance, establishing a penalty assessment program. Penalty assessment, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a, a ordinance that was drafted at the request of the chief of police in the police department to set penalty assessments for traffic violations, for infractions, for citations issued by the Town of Taos, and it just mirrors the penalty assessments in the state statutes for traffic violations, and so we submit it for your consideration and approval.
Chief, anything you need to add?
No, sir.
Council? Oh, public, I'm sorry, it is, it is a public hearing? Anybody from the public that would like to comment, speak for or against? If not, we'll close the public portion of this on ordinance 1411, we'll turn to the counselor. I'm sorry. We'll turn to counselor, Con Two, and then we'll come back to Counsel Peralta.
I was glad to, to be looking at that, but something that I noticed was missing that I need, I think needs to be on there is fines for people headed to the dump that don't have their loads covered.
Tarping, tarping penalties?
Yeah, that one irks me. So I'd really like that included.
I, I thought that was included. If it's not, we can amend the ordinance to include it. A lot of those folks are in the county, since the dump is in the county, but we meant to include it, so if it's not there, it will be, but we can do that by later publication and amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, there are, there are some fines that are set by separate ordinance. I believe this refers mostly to the Uniform Traffic Code.
And I actually, now that the manager has mentioned that, I think that's what happened. I think that specific penalty is in a separate portion of our code. But I will look that up. I just can't remember right now what it was, but I will get back with you as quick as I can.
Now that the girls were here asking us to adopt Albright Street, I think it's a good one to mention, so.
Thank you. Counsel Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, the only question I had was, is the parking fines under a separate code?
That's correct.
Okay.
To my recollection, it is. I don't have the code with me. I should have brought it with me, but that's my recollection and I will confirm that with you as well.
Because that would include, you know, fire hydrant parking, you know, all those illegal...
Handicap. I think all that is by separate ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Gonzalez?
Chief, on the improper display of registration plate, what constitutes that? And I guess the reason I ask is because I got stopped for a while back for having my plate covered with one of those clear plastic covers over it.
Yes, sir.
Now, the problem that I have with that is that there are not really anything, and I discussed this with Judge Ortega at the time, because it was a state officer that stopped me. It's not real clear as to what defines, because it was clearly visible, but he just didn't like it. It was dismissed, but at the same time, I guess those are the types of things that I'm trying to not inundate our courts with.
Exactly.
At the same time, and not inundate officers with, or just base it on a feeling.
Yeah, correct. There's a couple, a couple interesting aspects of that. It goes with the height of the plate. The plate has to be above a minimum, a minimum height. And then can the plate be easily visible and can the sticker be easily visible? And so those things are encompassed inside that. So theoretically, a person could be driving with a license plate that's absolutely covered with snow, that could be a violation of the law. So is anything that precludes the plate from being clearly visible? That being said, many times people will actually go through and cut the stickers off of plates and put them on other plates. And so if someone actually puts a clear, you know, piece of plexiglass or something from the plate, I think that's inherently a very reasonable thing to have happen. Some law enforcement officers have actually interpreted that as putting the cover on the license plate to obstruct it. So that's where the judgment comes to play.
So with regards to that, can we at least let maybe the local retailers know that it's advised not to be used on a rear-facing plate?
I really believe it's appropriate to use. I absolutely have no issues with that and nor have I seen that particular citation go out. I can't remember a time that municipal officers cited that.
Okay.
It's the same thing with the license plate lamp, where the, the light has to be illuminated. And for me, I just cannot make myself do that traffic stop. I just can't. But it's on the books and so, and I've actually seen some pretty good cases being developed from that. But once again, in the town, I don't ever remember a municipal officer citing for that either.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Peralta?
Just a couple, a couple of things in that regard. One is that I've seen an awful lot of license plates with a opaque cover. I haven't seen anything done about that. In regards to him just using the clear plastic?
Correct. And in regards, I'll speak for myself. If I see that, if I can see the plate to a degree that I can actually read it and I can run it and dispatch comes back with the correct information on the vehicle, then I think by definition the plate was not obstructed. And so...
The other thing, though, is that in, in some cases, the vehicle equipment hides the plate. In other words, for example, my pickup, the rear bumper actually hides the tag, so you can't see the tag. So how, what can I do about that? I mean, that would be ridiculous for me to get a ticket for, for a factory problem.
Right, exactly. In fact, that, that is a defense. That is a valid defense. There are some bumpers that the, that the hitch is smack dab in the middle of the license plate. And so depending upon what kind of hitch they had, that can obstruct the plate as well. And that actually is a valid defense of saying that the vehicle's manufactured, that degree is not something that I modified to put on there. So, yeah. I agree with you. You shouldn't, shouldn't be penalized for that. And most times, I mean, once again, for myself, the vast majority of the time, if I can see enough of the plate so I can actually run it and see what the expiration sticker is, then, then problem solved. It's many agencies that don't have the capacity, or they don't have the ability to contact dispatch, et cetera, that that won't be an easy fix, so that gives us authority to stop the vehicle and to double-check it from there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Counsel, Counsel Peralta and Counsel Gonzalez, I do remember that in Albuquerque, they had for a while those unattended vans with radar. And they also had the stoplight cameras. And so they were considering, and I think for a while did prohibit covers, plastic covers on the plates because the cameras were not well, weren't able to pick up the plate numbers to correspond to the violation of the speeding or red light violation, so. But I think they did away with all of that eventually, so. But I think that was, there was, and I think there are some states actually that outlaw plastic covers over the plates for that very reason.
And if, and if I may, with the Taos Police Department, we really stress upon them and then the people that we select, we really expect them to not be mindless robots. We expect them to use common sense and for them to attract any situation with just that basic outlook of, is this a reasonable person, a reasonable activity? And are they acting in a fashion that's endangered the community? If they're not, then all the factors are put together and that, some of the stuff that goes into whether something's being enforced or not, so.
What about enforcement in school zones as far as speeding infractions and whatnot? I see the, the stopping for a school bus, but what about those infractions? They follow the same rate as the speeding infractions or...
I'm sorry, the...
In a, in a school zone?
In school, they're, they're actually, in the, in the school zone, there actually is a separate ordinance, I believe, for speeding in the school zone. Now, is this a question about the enforcement or the fines?
The fines.
The fines on it. And off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I don't have it, but it is a higher fine.
So do you feel our fines are high enough even at, I mean, I'm seeing 15 bucks for...
Well, the other aspect, yeah, the other aspect of the fines in front of you is that this also allows the court, the court actually attaches different fees to it. So if you see us being for $15 in actuality, that may turn out to be a $32 fine or even up to a $64 fine. There's an assortment of fees that come in from, from different angles that are authorized through the legislation, through the branch. The penalty assessment that's in front of you is the base for the town, what, what we are allowed to put in front of the council. So there's actually, there's actually enhancements to the fines.
Councilman Gonzalez just reminded me, I talked to you some time back about end-of-school-zone signs?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, when does, where does the school zone end?
Yeah, I haven't seen any changes.
Yeah, you're right. I haven't, I've, yeah, I've dropped that one. All right, I'll jump on that. Okay. Thanks.
Because the one on Gustav goes actually all the way to Colorado now.[1136.16][1136.16](LAUGHTER).
Point well taken. I'll deal with that today.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Counsel? Any other questions? What is the wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Con Two?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
So we'll go on to next one. We'll open the public hearing for ordinance 1413, transferring two lots, Chumisa Verde. Discuss consideration possible approval of ordinance 1413, transferring two lots in the Chumisa Verde Affordable Housing Subdivision to Taos Habitat for Humanity to provide affordable housing to Taos residents. Mr. Lopez?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is actually an ordinance that was passed by the council in June of 2013, transferring lots 26 and 27 of the Chumisa Verde subdivision to Habitat for Humanity. The problem with that ordinance is it was not approved by MFA, and it has to be approved by MFA in order to be effective under the Act. And the reason it wasn't is because it contained in it a, a value of the appraisal, which turns out was incorrect, but also differed from two other values that were set forth in other documents referring to the same lots. So after discussion with both the deputy director of MFA, who's in charge of affordable housing, and their legal counsel, we have proposed this ordinance, which would replace the previous ordinance, would repeal the previous ordinance, and that is one that they have approved. We have also drafted a LORA, which is a land use restricting, restrictive agreement to be signed by Habitat for Humanity and MFA, in which they are able to purchase the lots at a reduced value depending on the income of the people that are going to live in the lots. And this is something that MFA is in favor of. In actuality, one of the lots already has a, a residence build on it, and they have the other one and they're ready to build, so they'd like to get this done as quickly as possible. And just as an aside for the council's information, there are 14 other infill lots in Phase One of Chumisa Verde subdivision, which Habitat Humani, for Humanity would like to purchase as well, so they can build on them and, and provide affordable housing. We would still have to do an RFP, but it looks like in all possibility that it may be only Habitat that, for Humanity that would respond to that. But that's the current plan. There is, of course, the 54 lots upon which homes are, have been built that haven't been approved by MFA, that was subject of a attorney general investigation, which appears now to have been closed. But it is a, still a problem as far as MFA is concerned and we're getting together, we met in Albuquerque in December and we're proposing to meet up here in January to go forward with respect to those issues.
Anything else, Mr. Lopez?
We would just ask the council to consider approval of this ordinance, which is the transfer, approving the transfer of lots 26 and 27.
This is a public hearing? Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak for or against, or just comment? Good afternoon. And just your name for the records of...
Good afternoon. Cynthia Arvidson. I'm the executive director for Habitat Taos and just wanted to thank Floyd and Robin for helping us do this. I was able to speak with a couple of the council members and they didn't realize that we didn't get funding from Habitat International. We raised 100% of our own funding. We have to actually tie it back to Habitat International to help build globally. So this is a huge help to us to be able to build these houses at an affordable rate because land is one of the biggest pieces of the house. So, thank you for considering this and, and the rest of the lots. It's a big help to us in our partnership in affordable housing for Taos County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue to do the good work you've been doing.
Thank you.
Y'all too.
So anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing and turn to counsel. Any comments, questions?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second? And a second? Any further discussion?
Just a couple of thank yous. I want to thank Cynthia and her staff for their tenacious efforts, Mr. Bellis for kind of coordinating, especially to Floyd and Robin Sims, who's been, they've both been quite instructional and professional. And I'm very excited about this. Thank you.
And thank you for hanging with us on it. I know it's been a, since I've been on the council, it's been an issue, so, thank you.
But we're getting it done. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Con Two?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll go on to matters from staff. And so, under, counsel, under, on the agenda, we have A, B, C, E, and F is on the consent agenda. So A is Resolution 1461, New Mexico Department of Transportation, 2013, 2014. Item B, Resolution 1474, hiring of immediate family member of town employee. Item C, award of RFP, SB 04, P 01415, for community of the medioengineering. And E, Resolution 1475, intergovernmental transfer request. And item F, Resolution 1476, amendment to Resolution 1067. Let's move for approval. Second. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Con Two?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Then we'll go on to item D, selection of project for 2015 Community Development Block Grant Application. Mr. French Espinoza and Miranda Quintana, consideration and possible selection of project for 2013 community. Should that be 14 instead of 13?
Sorry, it should be 15.
15, 15, sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So what is included in your packet is, again, a brief description of the project selection process, the recommendations that we received through public hearings from the last two meetings, and where, if the ICIP is, where would they rank in the ICIP, if engineering and design is complete, et cetera, and then the one presentation that was handed out last week for the Camino del Merced road improvements. So I don't know if there's other things that are going to be discussed, but that's how, we've listed them, how we would rank them as far as fundability.
Mr. Mayor, given that between our last public hearing and now, as most of you are aware, we received an engineering report in regards to the Family, Youth and Family Center that identified roughly $2.5 million, I'm sorry, $2.2 million in needs. In addition, there are a number of items related to the Youth and Family Center on the ICIP. In order to do our homework, I asked Linda Perry to contact their CDBG representative with the state. Linda, could you come forward this time? And I would ask counsel's consideration in light of the extent of the need, in light of that these are, some of these are health and public safety-related. The significant number of people that use the Youth and Family Center, as well as that it heavily meets the very demographic that the grant was designed for, that also that we are allowed in this year because we qualify at more than, greater than 50% eligibility is low mod, that we can do a community-wide project. And I also asked Linda to speak with that rep in regards to whether this project would be eligible and if eligible, how it would rank. And could you let us know that? If, if counsel would bear with me at this time in regards to that?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Manager Bellis. Yes, Manager Bellis did ask me to contact the CDBG representative to see if this would be an eligible project. And one of the things we discussed was how they rate and rank across the state. And they look very closely at how critical the project is, and those always get ranked higher. And because there are some critical issues with the Youth and Family Recreation Center, which are noted in the executive summary in the document that you have, this particular project would, is an eligible project and it would rate highly. In the executive summary, you'll see on the first page, under skating rink... In the executive summary, you'll see on the first page, under skating rink B, it says the wall assembly is failing on the east side of the building, and this must be addressed immediately, as we believe the stucco laminate is in danger of falling off the building, which could be dangerous to the public. This particular report was conducted by Design Build Solutions this past fall, and it's a 127-page document, but we've just kind of put the highlights in it for you today. The total amount of repairs that are due to the building is $2,537,000. And the recommendations were put into two phases. The critical phase is $1,140,000 with, and the second phase, which is suggested to do within the next two years, is $1,397,000. But under critical, which is on your first page of the budget overview, the replace of the skating rink east wall at $120,000, replacing the pool building wall for $410,000, replace the pool building roof for $368,000, and then the office and youth center roof and wall repairs for $242,000. Again, we do have ICIP requests on our current ICIP that total $814,000 that are specific to the Family and Youth Recreation Center. Brian is here, who could probably go into a little bit more educated detail of what's wrong with the facility, if you have questions directed to him about that.
Brian? Oh, Councilor Peralta?
Yeah, Brian, I have some questions and concerns, and, you know, I visited the facility. In the pool, because there are some critical issues there with the pool walls and the roof and that sort of thing, where are we at with Dextron working properly?
It's now operating 100% councilman. The Phoenix Mechanical has done a complete refurbishing of the unit. Everything that needed replacing has been replaced. Everything that needed repairing has been done. It's operating as it was intended to now.
Where are we at with humidity in that building? What percent?
We're operating at right at 40%. On the days when the humidity is extra high outside, it's now trying to keep it below 55%, which has greatly improved from what it was. So when the storm moved through the other day, we actually got to 53%. The recommended range is 50 to 60% for inside pools, but we're keeping it much lower because of the problems that we have. So when I left today, it was at 41%.
So where are we at in the migrating of humidity throughout that building? Because it's not only in the pool area, but it's also migrating into the Youth and Family Center centerpiece.
Right now, we also replaced the rooftop unit, as you know, the Resner unit, and that has solved the problems that were in the locker rooms. Along, when they replaced that, they also replaced nine vent fans, which is now exhausting a lot of the humidity that was produced in those rooms. So it's operating as it should.
So are we getting drying out of the wallboard and that sort of stuff?
I think that would be optimistic. Again, I'm not professional, but in talking with them, councilman, what they said is there's a, there's a dew point chart in here, and at just about any percent humidity, there will be some condensation when you have cold metal. And their report tells us basically the bottom line is at any time that humidity, regardless of what the level is, gets up inside those cavities where that steel is, it's going to condense and it's going to drip, and that's the problem. The, the air does migrate into the walls and the ceiling. It's just not anywhere near as bad as it was at the moment.
I understand that, but I'm just looking at, you know, doing these repairs that they're asking to be done, and three months from now, if we haven't gotten the humidity under control, we're going to be back in the same situation we were, we are now. And I, I'm just trying to avoid that, and this is why I've had a discussion that we really need to get the humidity down even below 40% in that facility. And I know you're concerned, so, but I'm just saying is that in order for us to stop, because of the fact that the way that building is built, you know, everything that is going to condense the humid air that's in there is on the north side, which is the coldest side of the building, so it doesn't really have a chance to continue evaporate or get out. And so we've got to find ways to get that humidity out of the building, because if we don't do that, everything that we do is going to be for naught eventually. The other thing that I look at is, and I didn't see in the engineering report, and that is, for example, I have an issue with the ice rink in the way the roof structure is made. It's like a, it's like an umbrella. It catches moisture and doesn't let it out. And so we should be looking at if, when we do the re-roofing of that, that we put vents in there to get the humidity out of that section of the building. Regardless of temperature outside, when you've got ice in there, it's going to evaporate some moisture, and that's getting trapped up in those, in that ceiling, and that's what's causing a lot of our problems in there. And I mentioned this before, and I didn't see anything in the engineering report of re-engineering some of the things. They just talked about, and I'm looking at summary reports that I got, they talked about just doing things to meet code as far as vapor barriers and that sort of thing, but didn't really look at additional engineering to help us from continuing the process or problems we have now with the moisture in that facility, because I think that moisture on both sides is causing us issues, and we've got to get rid of that, that moisture some way. And that's one of the ways you can do it, just vent that big building, you know, that umbrella that's out there, because the way we built it, you've got a canopy on both sides that doesn't let the moisture get out of there. And, and so when it gets up in there, it's got no place to go except into the metal and into the insulation, and that's why we got the dripping and insulation falling down and all those other problems. So I really think that there's some of those engineering things that we need to have looked at in order to avoid what's going forward in the future, and I'm appreciative of everything that you've gotten done so far to make sure that we're minimizing the current moisture issue that we have.
I will definitely address both those things with the engineers and make sure that they give us a recommendation on it, councilman.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Council, any further questions?
I have a question.
Please.
Just, I'm learning as I'm going here, but, you know, the construction of that building, was it just poor construction? Bad design? Where did the problem originate? Or is it just something that progresses over time?
Again, not being a specialist, but in picking up on what I've, all the people I've spoken to, is that there is a better design today, and code reflects that better design. And in many facilities around the country, they have learned, particularly with the type of construction that we have, that the new code needs to address far greater standards. So if you wanted to say it probably wasn't built as well as it should be based on what's known now, then the answer would be yes, it could be built better. I think at the time, everybody felt that it was a pretty good design and build, and I don't think it was built badly on purpose, but there is definitely a better way to do it today, so. How's that for politically correct? Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Nina?
Mr. Mayor, I think with the conditions of this and the fact that it is critical to the life safety of the youth within our community, I feel that the CDBG application go to the Youth and Family Center.
Formant a motion, councillor?
Yes. I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Could you repeat that?
Our, our application for CDBG grant this year will be used to repair the critical needs in the Youth and Family Center.
Thank you.
And so I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Greer, and Julie, and Rick, for all the conversations, the walkthroughs. I'd also like to thank the Taos Sports Alliance, who's been involved in some of these discussions. And I'm so grateful that we're going to go after reconstructing the Youth and Family Center with CDBG funds. It's a down payment on a $2.5 million venture, so we have a ways to go, and there's some creative thinking about there, about how we will bridge that $2 million gap. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, council.
And thank you. You know, one of the biggest questions, and you answered it right off the bat, as you went and asked, will we be able to use this money for this? Because I know we've applied for other, for uses of CDBG grants for the old county courthouse one year, and it was, you know, we lost money because we didn't do our due diligence in making sure that they were going to fund such a venture. So thank you for going out and going and finding out that they, you know, that it's a possibility, and that we also have that broad spectrum right now because we're designated as under the umbrella, so thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do have a question. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Are you guys taking donation of plants in the, in the, in the pool?
For the inside?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We always welcome plants, because every plant that's in there has been donated by somebody. And as, as luck has it, occasionally plants get too big for somebody's home.
I have one that's, I wake up at night because I think it's going to grab a hold of me, it's so huge. And my house is, my house is shrinking because the plant's taking it over, so if I can get it out of the door, we'll get it down to you guys.
Thank you. We'd appreciate it.
So, so call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, we had set aside $100,000 for roof repairs on the Youth and Family Center, and because of the extent of the need involving the Dextron units, and in fact, this study, some of that was spent, but we believe there's at least between $25,000 and $30,000, possibly more left of that money, and any of that will also be applied and show up in this grant request as matching funds.
Great, so we have our matching funds. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bellis.
Thank you.
So then we'll go on to financial update, and Marietta, presentation of the monthly financial report. I know if you give us your abbreviated version, if there's any major, major changes or things we really need to be aware of that might be, you know, impacting us.
I'll just briefly go through, actually, everything is on, I think you have everything attached. Our November report actually showed an increase for grocery receipts tax of 4.41%. And going into December's, we already got December's, and that was an increase of 11.72%. So I think you already have all that information. Based on that, the last three months have been an increase, 9.59, 4.41, and 11.72. So in September's figures or in October's report, I projected that we were going to be short. Now I've made a reverse projection. I told you if something changed drastically, we'd come back and revisit that. After talking to Rick, I'm not going to do it anymore, because we've had such a spike of a decrease and of increase that it's just a little hard to continue doing that. Last year, I made two projections, and it pretty much fell okay, but we didn't have those big spikes that we've had in the last three months. So for now, the additional increase that I'm saying we're going to receive is 1%. We're just going to leave that in the reserve until we have a good six months activity and just take a look at it, not make any more projections. We'll just leave that in the reserve. So that's really the main thing on the grocery receipts tax. This is now, this is like funky. There we go. Expenditures, everything's looking okay. We are, councilmember, or Mayor Protem Gonzalez reviews our invoices on a, when we send them out, our disbursements. We did get behind a little bit on our Ride Express, which is all the fuel for all the vehicles for the first three months. It's not shown in these expenditures right here for this month, but it will be shown in December's report, so you'll see a big spike on some of those departments.
Okay.
Marietta, speaking about that, will they, we see some savings because of the fuel price reduction?
Actually, you'll see, we'll probably look at maybe a comparison on December's report. I'll show you a comparison from the year before to this year, and yes, you will see a difference on that one.
Mayor, I had actually asked for finance to provide the last three years. I was calculating, I haven't gone through, through all of 14 yet, it's not all complete, but 2012 was actually less than 2013, so you can kind of see that trend with 13 being our high dollar gasoline prices spike, so I'm anxious to see what 14 looks like and hopefully first quarter of 15.
Right. And we can run those a little separate, so he did ask for that. So you'll see, we did, like I say, get behind, so those three months, which totaled probably, I'm going to say over $60,000.
Sixty-two.
$62,000 in vehicle costs, just for the gasoline. And that was with the short staff and Sharon trying to catch up with everything. So right now, through the end of December, once I do the reporting, and we're going to have our mid-year budget adjustments, we need that full activity for the first six months, and all that information will be updated.
Chief? Chief, real quick, we still, I know I was pretty adamant about it when I first came on, haven't really bugged about it too much back then, but are we still doing the no idle deal on PD?
I'm sorry, which one?
No idle, where their vehicles were idling?
I believe that was through Ken Coke, through Chief Coke? Yes. Except when we had the dog in the back of the car.
That's, yeah, that's a completely...
That's the exception. Or when the chief is, when the dog's in the back of the car, sir.
Okay.
When the chief's in the back of the car. The back of the car.
No, yeah.
Thanks, chief.
Another thing is just on the capital projects, you saw those big expenditures, over 500 and some thousand for Bertha Road. So this, this year to date, built, went quite high this month. So we did a lot of actual cash expenditures in the month of November for some of those projects that were in progress. We have one debt service payment that's due, well, it was due December. This is like I'm a month behind, but that's interest and for our town hall bond payments. Other than that, there's not, I mean, we are going to look closely at mid-year and see what kind of savings we have, but we do have to offset some expenditures that we didn't anticipate for. And then come February, the first meeting in February, we'll bring all those adjustments back to you. So right now, we're looking good. We're holding off on just spending any additional GRT monies that we are receiving for now. And I stand for any questions?
Don't really have any. Good job.
Thank you, Marietta.
Thanks, Marietta.
Sorry, I made Conra put this out because...
And, and council, I just want to, you know, lately, we've been receiving a number of letters in the mayor's office and a number of emails and stuff congratulating you guys and staff for the great job that we have been doing in getting the community involved in, and, and the great job that was done on the plaza and bringing people back. There's been a number of people that, in fact, I sent you one today, and I think, I see it now on your screen there, but, you know, just saying, you know, people are walking around that are not from here and realizing Taos has a lot to offer, that we've made it inviting for people, and, you know, they're just reaching out to you guys, thank you for the great job that you guys are doing, so just want to let you know that. I think it reflects in our community, it reflects in, in our visitors, and it reflects in our local people wanting to be a part of the community, exciting to share what, what we have to share, so just glad to let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go up, other matters, we'll go to El Pueblo Hall, Mr. Steve Kennenbeck.
Actually, I believe this is mine, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Kennenbeck is on vacation this week. Hi, Julie, you want to come up front? Basically, this is informational. There are a couple of things that we were hoping to include, including that UNM had done an examination of this building. They've indicated that they want to rent, continue to rent the building. They've used up all their other options and need the space in there as they continue to expand for at least the next five years. There are a couple of ideas that Councilman Peralta's been a very busy guy, so there are some things he's had a conversation... are some things he's had a conversation with them and with Steve in regards to a more affordable roof option that might fit within the money we have. And then also discussions with the university that we may want to put this issue off till January, when we can complete our transaction on the convention center and meet with them, UNM in particular, as to an overall plan for their interest in other buildings on Civic Plaza Drive, and come back to you with a more comprehensive recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, is, Rick, is this the, where the judges' chambers currently are?
That is correct, Councilman.
Could we look at possibly moving, and I know, mentioned this before, moving the judges' chambers over to City Hall where we had our executive yesterday in that executive training room? Being that there's that receiving desk or glass that sits right as you're walking through the hall, and open up that space, I mean, just so that we kind of move all services under, under City Hall's roof?
Councilman, based on your having recommended that before, we've looked at a couple of options. Peripherally, that one. Secondarily, the idea of using this as a courtroom and converting one of our unused meeting spaces in here for court chambers and office space, in that they do appear to be underutilized. That option might be cheaper. And then I believe that Councilman Peralta actually has a third option a little farther out that might involve some swapping of space with UNM and some reciprocation there. I don't want to discuss that one, and if you could probably give us till the first meeting in January, I think we could come back with some finite numbers on all three of these for you and get a good decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie, did you have anything else?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure what Steve presented you, you know, in terms of alternative roofs. You know, we do have figures, and it was as if that building is, something needs to be done with the building. You did see the appraisal report. So, the building is about $192,000. The land is about $300,000. Came in close to $500,000 overall. Repairs to that building that we have figured out to bring it up to code would run close to $250,000, but that does include a new roof. So, those are all figures to consider as to whether you want to throw good money after bad money, so.
Mr. Mayor, this is part of the problem I have, is I haven't gotten a report from the UNM as to what they looked at and to compare with what, what you had looked at. And I haven't seen the appraisal report either, so I need to put those together. That's why we're putting it off till January to take a look at this.
I think that's perfect. You know.
And Julie, since UNM has moved most of their people out of there, I'm, I know we have a leak problem, but we'd be okay for another 30 days, right?
Absolutely.
Nothing critically is going to change.
Nothing is going to change anything over there. It's what it is.
We could be saved with a three-foot snowfall.
I don't know if I want to go there with that.
The whole building could collapse, and we get a new one from the insurance.
Right. That would be perfect.
A gift for Christmas.
It'll happen Christmas Day.
Right. But those are, those are, it's a pricey issue. That needs a lot of consideration at this point in time, and if UNM wants to do something with it, that's good. We do have, I have a simple, single-page report for the roof replacement from Garland, and this would be the entire roof.
I believe we did attach that and send that out to Council, but we need that other information. While you're here, Julie, I do want to thank you. I know. Facilities has been early stretched this winter between the snowfall and trying to de-ice the sidewalks and helping us with holiday decorations on top of that. And most recently and right now, I know, on very short notice, they've been asked to dismantle, move all the equipment in the Gustav Center and to have that all cleaned up and ready to go per our agreement with Kit Carson by the 28th. And I appreciate that, as it is normally, they're extended to the limit, but they've taken on all this other work. And in fact, we're going to have to look at the overtime budget and adjust that accordingly, but we have some ways to do that. But again, I want to offer you my personal thanks and that to all your staff, because I know the holidays are a tough time to be spread thin anyway, and, but we wouldn't have been able to do any of this without you folks, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and you're welcome as well.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you very much, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, and please thank the staff.
And please tell the staff Merry Christmas as well, too, and thank them.
Merry Christmas Day to each and every one of you and your families.
Thank you.
And everybody else, sir.
So, we'll go to the item J, Echo Park locker rooms. Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Han is, is going to report on this also because he was at the meeting. We, I'm sure everybody's been as frustrated with this as I have, and it's gone back and forth, and we've gone through a number of designs, and in the attachments, you have, those final designs are there. And finally, we came all the way back and said we were not going to leave the room until we left with a final decision, and it was determined that the best way to go was with the stick belt, it would get as much as everybody wanted in there. This does, however, mean that's going to use the full budget from the insurance settlement, so some of the other goodies that maybe TSA or we were hoping for, like a press pack or benches, which I, I think we can find other small recreational grants for along the way. Those will not get done, but we are ready to proceed, and this is for informational purposes. You had already given permission to staff to execute a final design. And I believe, Councilman, is someone's here from TSA?
Well, I was hoping someone was here from TSA, but I see Julie's getting up, so did you want to speak, Ms. Julie?
Not really, but I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmembers and Mr. Mayor, what we discovered and discussed at this meeting where the design was approved, in quotes, it was to be sent to TSA. That membership was to approve what we have decided upon. We have yet to hear back from them. I noticed that Wayne did send me a rough breakdown of cost. What bothered me was there's about $100,000 or a third of the cost that went into plumbing for a very small building. I called him on that or emailed him. He said he will put that out to bid. There is some contingency room to move around. So, until we hear exactly from what TSA has agreed upon, we are working on the assumption that it has been approved, trying to go forward. The idea was also that it's not going to be done by April. However, it should be in the works, coming up out of the ground, so that whatever the Sports Alliance wants to show as a showcase, that would be available to the tournaments that are planning on running that. This building is also supposedly going to be a three-season building, meaning that it's, will be closed during the winter.
Thanks, Julie. Yeah, the modular precasting and cargo alternatives all came in way over budget, and so we've scaled back. And I think your assumption, Julie, and mine certainly is, we do have TSA approval. We haven't heard, I haven't heard from them yet, but as two of their members were there at this meeting, we felt confident. And really, we're just looking for buy-in from everybody so that in eight months, we're not pointing the finger at each other. So, we're presenting a unified front, and I think we've got it. Julie's keeping a close eye on this, as is Rick, and we're ready to go. Because UNM, the Air Force, and two other college teams are coming up, I believe, in the spring, they will be seeing this coming up out of the ground, which ought to hold fast our contracts, our future assumptions with them in the fall and next spring, so we're very hopeful.
Councilman Peralta?
So, the figure for the cost on this is under $4K?
Roughly what I have, sir, is $338,000.
Okay. And there's no showers, correct?
There are showers.
There are?
Yes, sir. There will be, are you familiar with a pole-type shower?
Okay, that's what that is, all right.
Yes.
Okay, now I get it.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
This is, this is going to be in a concrete slab, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Council, you know, I was uncomfortable all along with the idea of the, the modular and all the other solutions that were in there. I mean, these are buildings that, having played a lot of soccer, they, they can take a beating in a hurry, so I really do like the idea that we're going to the stick belt with the cement block walls high enough that anything that slams against is just not going to do any damage. They're easy to keep clean.
What about, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, the roof?
What they have.
Because I'm looking at that six-head shower, and I'm wondering if we're not getting back to the issue of too much humidity on what type of roof?
It's supposed to be a pitched roof, sloped out from the west to the, no, I take that back, from the south to the north with proper drainage. At the same time, there will be operable windows and venting, you know, with a possible HVAC system, but not a heating unit, because they do not want to use it during the winter. It's just an air extraction that will be provided in both locker rooms.
So, no heating in that building at all?
There's supposed, it's my understanding that there will not be any, that they will drain out the water system, you know, it'll be a hot water system, but they will drain it out during the winter in order to call it a three-season unit, utility building.
And I'm asking Rick for verification on this, but I am seeing two-unit heaters in there.
Okay, so that might be there.
And I guess the concern is, is that as we move forward.
No AC.
The anticipation, no AC. The anticipation is to, to build out the rest of the Echo Park at some point in the future.
That's correct.
We just want to make sure that we have the accommodation for that building, that other sports teams at the same time, be it yaffle football that plays in early fall, you know, have the ability to, to utilize those locker rooms as well, too. I don't want it geared basically to one sport.
I personally agree with you, that, but it seems as if, since they are non-gender-specific locker rooms, any team can utilize it, whether it's women's soccer, men's soccer, field hockey, football, however that plays, however that complex has developed.
But without a heater?
Well, we're trying to get it out of the ground.
Well, if we're going three seasons, the fall, Councilman, we do have two ceiling heaters in there.
Something, just as long as there's something.
Councilman Peralta?
This, this report shows a simplified HVAC.
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
Basically, that means there's very little limited venting, you know, in terms of your, your, what do I want? Your chases, your air duct work, so that it's not everywhere. It's just in the areas that it needs to be in. So, it's a simplified modified unit, whereas if you, similar to, if you'll allow me, to the Resnor unit that we had installed over at the pool. So, it's a small system that can be handled, easily handled by maintenance.
Does it provide air conditioning as well, or is it just air?
Air. It's not really a conditioning, air conditioning unit itself, from what I understand. This is something that.
So, in the heat of the summer, you could get a little warm in that building?
Possibly, yes, sir.
Well, Councilman Peralta, we did discuss that, and the window ventilation that Mr. Rutherford has designed is set up to capture airflow to keep it cool. It will get, it could get warm, for sure, but there should be plenty of cross-current.
Well, I'm just looking at it, saying, you know, if you're going to put some ventilation into it through the ceiling, the duct work be such that you could come back with an HVAC unit and just put it in there, and you don't have to reconstruct your duct work as well. So, you know, you can upgrade without, with a minimum of issues, I guess is the best way to push it. So, through the ventilation that's being put into the building, if you can construct it in a way that it'll allow for a HVAC unit to come back in later that can handle both heat and cooling, then that, that can be happened later on, but it would be set up for it. So, just a thought.
I'm, I'm hoping that's what's going on. What they're going to do, Mr. Rutherford basically gave us a footprint, a rough breakdown of mechanical plumbing, heating, et cetera, on that. Now, he's going to fine-tune his drawings. He'll be dealing with an architect, or the architectural expenses associated with it. Hopefully, that all gets worked out. We will have the final say. That's those of us who are involved.
I'm just giving food for thought for your discussions with him and the architect, that's all.
Right. I appreciate that, and I'm hoping they do that. Pay attention to it.
Right. Make your life easier in the future.
And Julie, they're making it easy for it to be winterized. You know, sometimes a building can be problematic if we're making it, you know, just a three-season or, you know, to get it, so they winterize it fairly easy.
Yes, sir.
So that, you know, lines can be blown out and, and, you know, we had this problem at the concession stand for the, at the field, at the, and, you know, and it was not very easy to get it winterized, you know. Just want to make sure that our staff is able to do it without having to call and, you know, start doing additional stuff to make it.
Yes, sir.
Winterized.
The idea is to keep it as simple as we possibly can, yet as functional.
Right.
And realistically, if it's not going to be used during the winter months, then it should be an easy system to drain out and drain down.
Winterize pretty easy.
Yes.
So, we don't usually lose showerheads, because, you know, they trap water, peat traps trap water, all that traps water, and then freeze breaks, and then we start with a problem with mold and whatever comes with that, so.
No, we're certainly looking to the extent that it's a very easy, simple building to operate, and its operating expenses should be kept to a minimum. This is what we're hoping for.
All right. Councilor Han?
Thank you, Julie. And associated with this, Kat Legere from the Taos Sports Alliance just came in to give us a brief update on the Taos Sports Alliance Quarterly Report, so pending your approval in councils, Mr. Mayor. And if you're feeling like you've discussed everything you needed to discuss regarding the locker rooms, I'd like to call Kat up to go ahead and give that report. Ms. Legere, yeah. We try and be efficient. And Councilman Peralta is really hustling us to get out of here before midnight, and it's Councilman Gonzalez's birthday, so.
It was.
Was, but.
Yes, please. And you might have to pull the mic towards you to be able to pick your voice up.
So, Kat, just to give you a chance, we've been going over the locker rooms, and Councilman Peralta has asked, and I'll try and relay this over to Wayne, that we be HVAC ducting compatible should we want to install more robust heaters.
Okay.
And air conditioning. And the mayor's concern is that should we decide to go to a four-season locker room instead of the current three, that we be prepared for winterizing potentials. Julie just gave her report. She's got this as well, so I'll turn it over to you.
I'm sorry that I missed that report. Sorry, we were guessing a little bit later in the day. Some of you, actually, I haven't met formally. I'm Kat Legere. I'm the executive director with the Taos Sports Alliance. I came on with them in March of this year, so I haven't been given the privilege to do a quarterly report with you yet, but, so I just wanted to say hello. Judy did come to our meeting this week, this past week. So, recently, you guys did receive from us our three-year business plan update. I hope everyone has at least had time to pick through that briefly. We're really pleased to know that the locker room development is underway now and looking forward to have it for the spring season if. forward to have it for the spring season, if possible. Was that discussed, because I am late to the party, about the timeline?
Briefly, yes. And what I said was that our college teams are coming in in the spring, and it's Julie's hope that they actually see the building going up, which will firm up their commitments for next year.
Yeah, I think that would be a good step, for sure.
So that's the timeline.
Good, and we did prepare, you know, to run, to run the show as usual. We do have Denver and UNM men's game scheduled right now for April 11th, so we're looking forward to that, and we're gonna build the rest of our showcase around that, mostly college, junior college, D1 and D2. So it should be exciting, looking for local and afar teams that are interested in coming to play. We do have a lot of interest in visiting the area. So I apologize for not being more prepared. Again, I did think I'd have a little bit of time, but it's okay. I guess I should say that I haven't done this before. So for the year, since I've been involved, we've been doing work toward having more athletic programming here in the area that brings both out-of-town participants, as well as engages local youth and adults in key events that we've been doing this year. We just ran our turkey trot at the middle of November, and were able to donate $2,300 to the Get Fit Taos Kids Program, run by Dr. Sylvia Villarreal. We're very proud of that. It's an increase over the previous year, a little bit at a time. We've also engaged in some new events this year. We helped Taos Mountain Warrior Fitness put on the Flex Your Test Throwdown at the Taos Youth and Family Center, which was a great success, and brought in 100 out-of-town athletes to engage in a really cool, sort of unbeknownst to me, kind of event, a CrossFit styled event, men and women, adults. And most of them did stay the night. It was designed that way, and that was one of the pieces that we've tried to jump into a little bit more, is helping groups that are already doing great things by giving them more logistic support. I have a background in marketing, design, communications, and technology, and so in the past, before working with the Sports Alliance, I've supported the Taos Community Foundation to put on their annual event, the Ridge-A-Thon up at Taoski Valley. And so this year, we're actually gonna partner with them in March to put on the 19th annual event. We're looking forward to doing that. So the Taos Sports Alliance in this situation is serving, is event production, coordination, and marketing for groups that want to do events to fund, raise funds, or raise awareness around a certain activity or need in the community, and we're able to contract to provide those services. So that's one of the ways in which we're trying to expand the services we offer, outside of being a, you know, one-horse show with the Eco Park. We're just trying to expand so that we have more sources of revenue and involvement in the community. But in terms of the Eco Park- Could I get a glass of water? Thank you. Sorry. We are hoping to have 20 to 25, that would be a goal number, men and women's teams here in the spring. We did not do a fall showcase of NCAA, but we did have two great high school events. Thank you. And we brought in many teams from out of town to be involved in those. Sorry. I, I guess we should say, per the document that you guys have been given, that we are working toward the direction of creating revenue sources from a creation of a recreation district here in the Taos County. We want to effect multiple levels of change in the community. We wanna talk about social change that we can create through participation among youth, as well as talk about the health benefits for the community with greater access to sports and recreation opportunities, whether they be organized sports, or enjoying the beautiful natural resources that we have in our area. We, the Sports Alliance wants to be able to push that information out, not only to the local community, but also to the broader visiting community through a web portal, and by working in cooperation with other groups that are already working on, on these sort of marketing sides of things, getting the, getting the word out, inviting people here, and giving them a reason to come with a great event. So then we can, of course, enjoy the benefits of that at the shops and the, you know, lodgers as well.
Well, thanks, Kat. I wanna say that the deliverables that TSA has promised have been met, and in fact, they're going beyond that, exceeding their, their contract. Per council recommendations last spring, they have been not only presenting us with this work in this document, which I think everybody's gotten, but working on a long-term sustainability program, and Kat just alluded to the regional development, recreational development zone, an initiative that we should talk about. It's quite bold, and I think creative. It will lend the possibility of removing certain line items out of our budget, relieving financial pressures for the town. It creates a collaborative effort with the county at large, and yet doesn't necessarily encumber, it will not encumber the county either, and yet provide family, youth, and adult sporting activities for all ages. Yaffle, soccer, things like turkey trots, which I have no idea what that is. Just imagine a bunch of turkeys running up the street. But, and probably in close collaboration with Holy Cross and Tri-County Community Services, as it's indisputable that athletics and physical activity lends towards good brain development and a healthy wholesome life. So it's, it's quite exciting. We're at the beginnings of, I think, a new venture. So Kat, I wanna thank you for taking the time to come in today. And did you have anything else you wanted to add? There may be councilors or councilwomen with questions.
That was honestly more eloquent than my, my report.
I don't think so, but.
I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and hope to work with you in the near future to come to these rec district determinations as we move forward. I'm always here if anyone wants to chat. Does anyone have questions?
Your meetings are every Monday?
No, we, well, monthly. We meet around the second Tuesday of the month, but it sometimes moves.
Okay, cause I really did like everything that I heard in your vision and in the meeting that I did attend, so thank you, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you. We'd be happy to host anyone at our meetings, and if you're interested, I can, well, I'll continue to send out the information, and it'll be around the office.
Okay, and thank you, Fritz, for putting that in a nutshell.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Kat. Oh, for TSA, yeah. So Ms. Kat, could we make a request of you? When you schedule your next TSA meeting, could you notify the council in total? Because the mayor just expressed an interest in coming. It's, I, I would like to be there. I'm sure Councilman Gonzalez and his Yaffle connections, and Councilman Peralta with his swimming connections, and Councilwoman Canty. So if we're aware of it, we can just kind of keep each other posted, especially as we begin to move forward on the regional recreational zone that we're brainstorming at this point.
Yes, I'll, of course, let you guys know, since we have a date.
You don't, you don't have a date yet?
It'll usually, well, we usually will start, schedule it right at the beginning of the month, so if that's not too short to notice, otherwise I'll just get on it right now, and let you know this next week.
If you could let us know, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor. So go under item 11, Town Manager's Report, if there's anything.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. One is that we had originally looked at workshops on the week of the 26th of January with DOT, MFA, Economic Development, and Tourism. Tourism might be a little shaky, considering we just changed commissioners, but nice to hear, again, that it's somebody from our area that we could work with. I had anticipated doing our retreat following that, but the county had voiced a request that they felt with their new members coming on and their orientation and a few things during January, they'd asked if we could put that off till February. If we do that, and I will check with each of those agencies, they were very quick to respond, but if we do that, I would like to send out a note and really get a firm date that we could do a retreat in January to talk about our goal-setting for the coming year, and hopefully, late enough in the month that Marietta could have some financials for us that we could look at, and get some priorities for the next six months, and actually initiate the stage, set the stage for the budget process to begin a couple of months later. So I'll be sending that out, and just one thing that I'm, obviously, you were notified that we did have a water leakage, and I thank Public Works for getting on that very quickly. Ninety-five percent of the people were restored within about an hour and a half, it was under two hours. And then, in regards to a question that the press put out there, with your CSBG, CDBG, sorry, funding decision today, and I will summarize this and send this out, and also with our permit approved, the airport, 28 of the 47 ICIP priorities are either fully funded, partially funded, funded for the design phase that would then allow full funding, or of funding identified and pending the completion of another project, an amended application, or are on the list for funding of the next funding cycle. And considering those are all the priorities that came from all the departments, I think that's pretty ambitious, that this council has made a lot of progress on those in a very short amount of time. I thank Linda for finding a lot of that money, particularly the money, planning grants for the plaza, the park, the tree restoration, and some of these other projects that have been put on here. I think that's it. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Rick. Go on to, item 12 matters and reports from the, from the mayor. Again, just wanna say on that water leak, that was not our staff that created, or it's not a failure of our infrastructure. It was actually a, somebody that bored through our water line, and, and-
They're just taking a shortcut.
Yeah, they were taking a shortcut. So I just wanna make sure that the public realize that it's, you know, once in a while there's a mistake made, and we tried to get it restored as fast as we could. I know we got inundated and flooded with phone calls. You know, Kathy and staff were able to put out some of them fires, and, but again, we realized that, you know, a lot of our constituents are, you know, and, you know, it is cold out there, and a lot of the radiant heat runs with water and stuff, so people were concerned, so, but we did, our staff did very good in getting it located and isolated and get back to work, so, thank you. Anything?
Yeah, kudos to staff. When I, no sooner than I realized the water was out, then suddenly it was back on. So thank you.
Okay. So, other matters, matters from the council? Counselor, where do we wanna start? Want to please end?
Sure, I don't care. IGC, again, Enchanted Circle Day coming up on January 21st. Landfill, you've probably seen the public notices on sludge transport hearings to be held in this chamber on January 15th at 5:30, and if there's a need, though, those public hearings will continue the next night, I presume, at the same time in this chamber. Hospital Health Study Committee, next meeting is January 7th at 6:30. Those are open to the public at the Holy Cross Hospital Boardroom. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Peralta, anything?
No, I have nothing to say, Mayor.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of items. Number one, Taoski Valley is going through their application processes, the state of New Mex, state of New Mexico on their TID, which would allow them to keep 100% of their grocery receipts tax generated through efforts of construction for infrastructure development in and up at the ski valley. And I would ask if this council and mayor could maybe entertain offering a resolution of support to the ski valley with regards to that. It would help them significantly in several aspects, in one, developing the infrastructure at the ski valley, but number two, not really cause any burden to them financially and within their structure, because all infrastructure improvements would be paid back by the, by the TID, or the swap for grocery receipts. So basically, the state would, would give up their, their grocery receipts tax to Taoski Valley for the repayment of, of any infrastructure improvements that they do. So that's one item, and then number two, just wanna wish our employees and the entire general public a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor, cut to?
I don't have anything to report, but I do have a couple of questions. I was wondering, I had seen for the last two days a report on television that Monique Jacobson is getting appointed as the head of the director for CYFD. Is she gonna be also with tourism, or is she gonna be leaving that position?
We'll, we'll turn that over to Rick.
Yeah, no, she's moved over there full-time, and her communications, current communications director, who was prior to that, the marketing and tourism director for Red River, is taking over for her.
Hmm, that's a, that's a big one to lose. She's been really good there. And the other one was, I believe, last month when Joni Griffith was here, I had asked her if she could come monthly to give a report to the town council, and she never came in December, so could she come in January? Give us an update on-
I will put that on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. If-
Move to adjourn. Before that, Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
And also, thank you. So we have a motion to adjourn in a second?
One second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.